I'm Kathy Obradovich with the Des Moines Register and we are here today with the second batch of a total of seven candidates who are running for the at-large seat for Des Moines City Council. Running at-large, of course, means the candidate represents the entire city instead of just one ward and the election is November 5th. So here today, we have Carl Voss, right here, if you're going to raise your hand, Jackie Easley, Sheila, all right, help me with your name, Canoplo Odole. Is that right?
Yeah, Canoplo Odole.
Canoplo, no, Odole, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
And Marlon Mormon. And so let's have the register staff as well introduce yourselves.
Andy Dominic, editor and writer.
Richard Doak, member of the Adcor Board.
Austin Cannon, the city reporter. Charles Buescher, editor.
Okay, great, thank you. So let's just go around the table, starting with Carl, and I'm just going to use everybody's first name if you don't mind.
Sure.
But please introduce yourself briefly and tell us why you're running for city council.
Yes, I'm Carl Voss. Live in the East Village, been in the Des Moines community since 1971. Motivated for this job to see that there are great opportunities to improve Des Moines.
Okay, great. And Jackie, please tell us, introduce yourselves, introduce yourself and just tell us why you're running.
Jackie Easley. And since childhood, I have lived in five neighborhoods in Des Moines, starting with the Drake neighborhood. Each has really shaped the character of who I am today, my experiences in those neighborhoods. Probably my first memory is moving to, from the Drake neighborhood, which is campus-owned housing. When my parents sought to move outside a certain area in Des Moines, they had to have a Drake colleague actually peruse and do a site visit to the home before they could purchase it. So early experiences, again, have shaped who I am and why I have done the work that I've done in the community, the volunteer work, and currently sitting on the Plan and Zoning Commission, being able to affect and impact policy for all neighborhoods.
Okay, very good. And Sheila, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Sure, thank you Kathy and thank you for having us here today. I'm Sheila Canoplo Odole. The K is pronounced, all of the Os are long. And I'm running because we have a very narrow window of time to take action on climate change. And over the last couple of years, I've been volunteering with the Citizen Task Force on Sustainability and that include, part of that was working last year in an advisory capacity with the city on their energy policy task force. And we were able to pass an ordinance that measured our energy and water use of the largest buildings in Des Moines as a strategy for lowering overall greenhouse gas emissions for the city. And in that process, we started off with a very strong ordinance that I was happy with and that would have helped us reach our goals quickly. But you know how it is with politics, things get talked about, they get watered down, they get, you have to compromise. And I just felt after that process that I could spend my time banging my head against the wall, trying to get our leaders to go in the direction that I know they need, we need to go, to mitigate and adapt to climate, or I could try to replace one. So I've always been interested in running for office and I felt like this year's at-large seat was a good opportunity to maybe start in on that activity. And so I feel like we have some good leadership on the, on the council, some great leadership on the council, but when it comes to climate, we don't have enough. So that's why I'm running.
Okay, very good. And Marlon, tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you're running.
Marlon Mormon, I've lived here 29 years. I own a historic home, the Carpenter Mansion, where the Des Moines Arts Center was founded, been working on that for about 25 years. And I'm a retired administrative law judge. I did 24 years and issued 15,000 unemployment decisions, so I have some experience in that. Practiced law part-time and I want to make this a full-time job if elected. I believe the people need representation that will be there and hands-on. I'm going to let them have my telephone number, my cellphone number, I'll be available seven days a week for, for our residents. We need accountability and transparency, I believe I can bring that. I've been working with neighborhood groups for over 20 years and, and I'm not afraid to go to every neighborhood and meeting that I can find. Think the council needs guidance, they've always looked to guidance from our local neighborhood groups, they've looked to guidance from grassroots organizations and boards and commissions. And you just got to get out there and mix with the people and go to these associations if you're going to properly represent. And you know, my promise at every one of these meetings I go to is I'll represent the people. If they want me to vote away and they can prove a clear consensus, I'm going to be on their side every time. I will not substitute my judgment for that of the people. It's their neighborhood, they know what's best. Thank you.
Starting with you, Marlon, for the next question. A priority question, what exactly do you think Des Moines needs most? I mean, as you look at all of the things that you could work on as a city council person, what would be the top priority or the thing you think Des Moines needs the most?
You know, my door knocking and talking to hundreds of people, I think it's pretty clear, there's a couple of things that they really want to top priority. Number one, they want to work on the infrastructure. We put a lot of money into economic development programs, you know, tens of millions of dollars every year. We rebate $15 million a year into various companies for buildings that they built, private companies. They really want to see that money channeled in infrastructure. We've diverted more money to fixing our roads in the last couple of years, but what we need to do is take economic development money, put more of it toward our roads and then more of it toward tax reduction, because that's the second issue that people, actually probably the primary issue when I talk to people, they feel the taxes are way too high. We're at two and a half percent rate of assessed value every year. It's more like a mortgage than it is a tax and we're taxing our seniors out of their homes and I hear that all the time. I get call after call that if you retired 10 years ago because of the inflated values of homes, their taxes have went up so much that they can't afford it. I had a call a couple of weeks ago, people said we're paying half of our pension for property tax. And these are not wealthy people, but you know, if we want affordable housing, the best affordable housing for seniors is that house that they worked and paid for during their working life. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And Carl, same question to you. You've done a lot of door knocking.
I have.
What do people tell you that Des Moines needs most? What do you think Des Moines needs most?
Fix the roads. And I think that's the top priority that people expect that they're, they can get around the neighborhoods and fix the roads. So when we dive into this a little more, I can talk more about some ideas I have about how we can pay for it.
Okay, well, we'll definitely ask you about that. That's definitely on the list, so we'll do a round on infrastructure, but just go on to Jackie, what do you think Des Moines needs most?
Well, I do have been speaking to a lot of people and certainly those who've come to our Plan and Zoning Commission. I've adopted as kind of my campaign theme bridging gaps, because I believe that while the city has worked earnestly to help our citizens through the infrastructure needs, the local option sales taxes geared up in a program called Invest Des Moines to hopefully provide repair that's needed. But also I believe that city services are important too and I would like to see a solid plan on affordable housing. And I'm also interested in, I call it community well-being, but services such as mental health services are absolutely critical for really the future growth of our community and of course, the overall community well-being.
Okay, very good. And Sheila, what does, what does Des Moines need most?
Well, I have three parts to my campaign platform and they are climate action, social equity, and a vibrant economy. And under each one of those, there are priority items that we can do, that we need to work on. And I believe strongly that unless we address and take climate action, nothing else is really going to matter. The roads are bad, it's true, and now that we have the one cent sales tax, we can start accelerating those repairs. But with the extreme weather that we will continue to have, our roads are only going to get worse, so we really need to do something to mitigate and address climate action. And one of those things that we can do is, as we are improving our roads, we need to also institute what's called green stormwater infrastructure. And it's, it's adding curb cuts, retention ponds, bio swales, buffer strips, things like that, that will slow down the rain deluges as we get them and decrease the likelihood of the flash flooding like we saw last year. Under climate action, we need a plan, we need a full-time person to institute that plan, we need an emergency response, coordinated emergency response plan that coordinates fire, police, ambulance, city government hospitals. And then we need to look at food security, water, energy, and our waste streams. And under each one of those, there is an opportunity as well, economic opportunity for people. So I believe strongly that, you know, while the roads are a problem and the streets are a problem, they're only going to get worse, so we really need to put some energy into solving the climate crisis for Des Moines.
Let's do a round on, on infrastructure and, and starting with you Sheila, you've got infrastructure plans under your climate change proposal, which may not be currently in the budget. How do you pay for those? You may be saving money down the road, but you've got to invest first, right? So, so where does that money come from?
Well, so I like the idea of asking our affluent and our corporations, especially the ones who have taken tax abatements or have taken TIF plans for their development to, and I think it was Jack Hetch who said this the other day, to ask them to reimburse the city 10% of their abatement or their TIF and put that into a revolving fund that can be put to use for some of these, some of this infrastructure costs.
And you're going to ask them or are you going to tell them?
Well...
I mean, is this a voluntary donation?
Well, you know, that's always, that's always the, the key question, isn't it? I mean, I think we need to start by asking them and seeing if we can get them to buy in, because they benefit from having a stable community. And they have become prosperous by being in Des Moines. So, you know, I think it's fair that they make some of the investments so that Des Moines continues to be a stable and vibrant place.
And Marlon, you said you wanted to channel, you also wanted to channel economic development money into infrastructure, is that your primary? Or maybe you said just into property tax relief? How do you pay for the road improvements that you think are...
You know, last year, the city council increased the road improvement to about $20 million, but we have a large fund and like Sheila, I'm agreeing with her, you know, we have tax increment financing, that's our dollars, that's property tax dollars. It's actually property tax dollars from the schools and it's property tax dollars from the county. Because when we lock in a TIF district and we have some of them that are 40 years old, all the increase in property tax goes to the city, so the schools and the county doesn't get to share off that increase. So we've been stealing money from them. It's our dollars, we don't need to ask these developers, we can tell them. We can just take the money and say, you don't get any more economic incentives. But I think we've over-incentivized our areas, we've over, we've rebuilt downtown on TIF and rebates and free land. We've done the same thing for the East Village and it's done a very good job of it. I think it's time we turn that around and I, and the people really get tired of seeing these stories in the paper saying $10 million to one of the most profitable corporations in Iowa. And it's happened again and again. And so there's money there. We can put extra money on that 20 million, we could double it easily by just taxing, taking into tax increment financing. Now you have to use TIF in those districts, so you use the TIF in the districts that would rebuild the infrastructure, then the other districts have more one cent sales tax money. So I think the money's there, we just have to have a paradigm shift on how we think about economic development.
What do you think about that approach, Carl?
Well, let's see, in part, so we've got TIF dollars that need to be invested in the, in the area that they're, were, where the increase has occurred. And so the downtown core, those dollars need to stay in that area. So that, some of the other areas that, for slum and blight, that's how downtown was established, there's no sunset on that. There's economic development that could happen throughout the community and there's 20-year sunset on those, so we'll just take Oak Park and Highland Park. Actually, I think all four areas of the city that have been targeted for additional dollars, they will set up a TIF district in those areas. They haven't established the boundaries of those yet, so those dollars need to stay in the areas where the improvements, where the incremental property values have occurred.
What, what about the argument that, you know, essentially what TIF is doing is enabling investment that would not come otherwise? In other words, that the city is not losing money, we hear this from, for example, Mayor County, the city's not losing money from giving back or rebating some of those property taxes, because the city would not, you know, would not have anything, right? You're, you're giving up part of the growth, but without it, you wouldn't have this development. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, so, well, let's just take the TIF that was originally, or the dollars that originally went to Nationwide. So they had a workforce of around 600 in Des Moines, so they got TIF dollars to improve their campus. And so that, now that was about 3,500 or 3,600 new jobs in Des Moines, so I think that was a good thing. Those TIF dollars built the ML King, the east-west portion, I mean, that's part of what the dollars did. So that not only brought more jobs to Des Moines, but, but, but helped pay for a road that otherwise would have gone to, to property tax dollars. So I think TIF is a good thing. I, I believe as set up by law, the other taxing districts, the schools and the county have to get their dollars out of that, as I understand it.
Yes, and I might elaborate, because when I did serve on the school board, we did do a special study of how the TIF financing affected the schools in terms of asking for additional resources such as the school bonds and the levies. And actually, at that point, very, there was very little revenue generated from TIF back to the schools, I think you mentioned that point already. But I do believe that it is important that we encourage development and I've kind of taken a posture, since I've been on planning and zoning for the past 10 years, I've seen some very innovative small business projects come to this community. And I believe that our mission should be to support, and many of those are from a refugee and immigrant community who want to open, invigorating their neighborhoods, want to open almost sort of cultural type areas, but including retail and things that are bringing back revenue to our city. So I would like to see the city actually encourage more small business development. I don't know if we're going to have time to talk about Franklin Junior High, but the Planning and Zoning Commission fully vetted Franklin Junior High when it came before us about a year ago. And we did listen to the neighbors and there were some concerns about noise and so forth. We added conditions to the project regarding the entertainment portion, but 13 of us supported Franklin Junior High as, as the development project.
Okay, we were just in there for the mayoral debate.
Yes.
And that was the case that the developer did not ask for any...
Correct, correct. Did not ask.
City dollars, yes.
That's what I'm talking about, encouraging.
Yeah, well, let's start with you, because you mentioned affordable housing as a priority. And of course, the, the city council has been going through this rezoning legislation for, for housing here. There's been some concerns raised that this will make it more difficult for affordable housing to be, the accessibility of affordable housing in Des Moines. What's your response to that and, and do you think that the housing, the zoning is a good idea?
You are talking to the code guru, at least in my family, the retiree hearing about it. Again, planning and zoning, we had the opportu, first of all, we needed to revisit the city code, it was 50 years old. Born and developed during a time when people were kind of cookie cutter, you know, type housing and so forth. So we, we needed to revisit the code. And I applaud the professionals, our city staff, we brought in consultants to kind of help us work through, what are some prudent and sensible code changes that we should make? Now we listened to, and when I say we, I'm talking about the city, listened to neighborhoods, they had focus groups, we had public hearings at the commission level. And after hearing concerns from, and I want to highlight from neighbors, we determined that minimum square foot requirement didn't seem appropriate in the code and also garages.
Okay.
We believe that neighborhoods have, we have planned Des Moines, where neighborhoods have determined what is the character of their neighborhood. And so there's an opportunity for flexibility. Some neighborhoods can, it is, it is important to build maybe homes that have larger square footage and with the garages. But the goal should be, and I believe there was a study, that there are going to be an influx of new jobs in this community in the next few years, where the majority of the individuals will be making less than $50,000 a year, I believe. And then if you look at the minority community, where the most recent study done by the Iowa Project said that only 42% of African-Americans are homeowners in central Iowa, I believe we need to, not just encourage, but we need to have a plan for affordable housing in this community.
So just to be clear, the, the legislation that the city council has, has moved forward does have minimum size requirements, does it not? So you're not in favor of that part?
They put it back in.
But on the whole, you like the, you like the fact that the code's being updated?
It did need to be revised, that is true.
Okay.
I don't know, let me continue. So what's the council voted on at their meeting last week, was the code with those revisions. However, after the first reading, they could not make any substantive changes. So now we're on what's called a parallel track between what was voted on in the current code and what amendments can occur.
Okay.
So this is where it's very important that what we're hearing from, you know, the communities in terms of, not just minimum square footage, and I always tell people, there's so many other issues in that code, you know, what kind of siding, homes are going to have roofs, density makes use, single family, there's so many other issues in that code. And so I believe, and this has precipitated, of course, my interest in being able to vote on what amendments occur in that code.
Okay, all right. While we're talking about housing, what is your view of the, the new zoning ordinance that's, that's underway? What changes would you make? What do you think the city should be doing overall to have more affordable housing?
Well, my understanding is the 1,400 square foot minimum is for an expedited process. And it doesn't mean that smaller houses can't be built, they would just have to follow the normal channels of plan development and, and approval. But I don't know if that's necessary. I think we're going to, you know, in the coming years, we're going to need more and more affordable housing. And honestly, I prefer to call it entrance level, entry level housing, because, you know, that's really what it is. It's, it's the opportunity for people to get into a home for the first time often or, you know, maybe they're downsizing as a retired couple. And people need different styles of housing throughout their lives, so I, I believe we, we need to have a wide variety of, of options for people. And I think our neighborhoods, we want to have a mixture of options in every, in, on every street in every neighborhood, so that, you know, we do mix as a people. And, you know, and I think this, one of the things that the city needs to do in conjunction with this, not only make sure we have enough, and I think, you know, part of that solution could be setting a minimum percentage that developers have to include when they do their developments, they have to have a certain amount. And, you know, that discussion is, is open. But we also need to fight for living wages. You know, Jackie pointed out that most, you know, a large number of people make less than $50,000 and that's not going to be enough to, you know, for some, for a family afford necessarily to afford a home.
How do you do that at the city council level?
Well, you know, it is a state...
I mean, the minimum wage is a state issue.
Right, it's a state issue, but the, you know, the state also just recently put the kibosh on the, on a community deciding for itself what its minimum wage should be. And so I think the city needs to take a strong stand and advocate to change that. I think, you know, and, and also I think we need to encourage our business owners to pay, pay more than, than maybe what they're wanting to. If they, everybody paid a little bit more, I think it's better for everyone.
So they pay more and give back some of those tax abatements, so...
I know, it seems like, it does seem like we're asking them to do everything.
That's why we need more small businesses.
Right, and exactly, that's why we need more small businesses.
Marlon, how do you get more affordable housing in, into Des Moines? What's your view of the zoning changes?
Well, you know, the zoning changes, the one gripe I have with them is infill housing, setting a certain property size for infill, you know, one size doesn't fit all. Every neighborhood has a different structure, a different makeup, let's do the fabric to meet the neighborhood and put it on the fast track like they should, but we got to find some kind of a formula. And, you know, I'm with Jackie on that. I, I think that, you know, one of the, Sheila got a good point here, that, you know, living wage, what can we do? Yes, we can do things. If we'd been doing it since 1970, when we started our first TIF district, where every project had to have living wage jobs from the time the pencil hit the paper for the first time till it was working, they had to provide living wages. We have plenty of TIF projects where it's require high-paid jobs, high-paying jobs, 70, 80,000. But, you know, those folks live in Clyburn, Dale, West Des Moines, it's a general rule. And I know that because I've done 15,000 unemployment cases, I know where these people live. Where, there are jobs in Des Moines with people living in the suburbs. So, you know, it's more of those living wage jobs, which is what we need. And Hy-Vee downtown was a perfect example. We paid for almost half of that with some kind of tax dollars, city, state, federal, and tax abatement. You put it all together, it may very well be 50% of that was paid. We even gave them the land that it was built on. I was on the urban design review board when that happened, I spent five years on that board. That's the board that, that oversees tax increment financing. And most important board nobody's ever heard of. I wish more people would go and attend, but it's a seven in the morning meeting. So, so yeah, we can, we can work on that. We could have been working on for 40 years and it's not too late. If we want to continue this policy of incentivizing these extraordinarily profitable companies, we should attach a living wage job to it, just, just like my friends have said. So there's the low income inspections, I think there's a real issue on inspections, you have to be careful with inspections. We can inspect low-income housing out of existence. You deny a rental certificate for a year on a property because of cosmetic issues and you're going to end up with the low affordable housing raised up to the point where it isn't affordable anymore. You can't have 25% of a unit's empty because the sofas were painted the wrong color. Some of these inspectors have a moving target on what they need to do and I've seen it. I've seen inspectors force a unit to put new siding on and then re-side with new siding right over the top. And these kind of things happen. And it's not, and I don't know whether it's intentional, whether there's a change in attitude of inspectors, or just somebody gets, you know, bugging their, and causes it. But we have to watch that too. Inspections are important, we can't have people without power, can't have them without, you know, water and with heat, and that does happen. But inspection once a year probably is not the way to get at that. You know, denying certificates because of cosmetic reasons, we need to find another route around that.
Okay. Carl, wrap up this question for us.
Well, I didn't even get a chance.
I'm giving you your chance right now, where do you get, where do you get more affordable housing in Des Moines and what's your view of that zoning change?
I wouldn't mind if you came back to me on roads, because I didn't get to talk about that, but anyway. I wouldn't mind if you came back to me on roads, because I didn't get to talk about that, but anyway. So, you know, we can have the best planning and zoning or zoning rules in the world, but it's not worth the paper it's written on if we can't attract developers who are willing to actually build in Des Moines. And the approval process, the legal process for plans, the inspections that go on throughout, whether it's residential or multifamily or commercial, it is just too dang difficult to navigate. And I've had plenty of developers who say they will not build in Des Moines. So Plan DSM has attempted to fix some of these issues, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done. Our permitting process is challenging at best, and you can find examples of how West Des Moines is more streamlined. I think we're fooling ourselves if we think we can add affordable housing stock without attracting more quality, high quality developers to Des Moines. Affordability's important, but we need to deliver quality, affordable homes and multifamily units. I have some experience in this, I, I've been on the Neighborhood Investment Corporation. We have three downtown developments that were general partners on. The, the Brickstones, Woodland Avenue, so that's thirty-five percent affordable. Stock Bridge is a hundred percent affordable, East Village Square, forty-five percent affordable. So all those have, you know, given me some experience in this area. I think we can do better.
Okay, before we move on, what did you wanna add on roads?
Well, so, you know, one opportunity is, is that we should look into the opportunity for bonding. So the, the bonding rate is really low right now. And if we accelerated our programs for rebuilding roads, we'll save dollars because of the bonding rate and the increase in construction rates. A good example, Highland Park, Illinois bonded for a billion, that's a B, and they actually made some money by loaning money to other cities to cover their bonding costs. So I think that, you know, if we look out on the horizon, what other communities are doing, I think there, there are some opportunities. Going back to roads, 'cause I didn't really get a chance to, to weigh in there, we need to spend more dollars in the neighborhood roads rather than widening the roads that lead out of the city. So I would increase the dollars spent in the neighborhoods and spend less dollars on, for example, the extension of ML King to the east, which I think is a sixty million dollars. Now that's a combination of state, federal, and local dollars, but I think we would be foolish to neglect the neighborhood streets on that cost, so.
I wanna move on. Des Moines Water Works has been a big issue in the mayoral election, I just wanted to get your take on that. Starting with Carl, what is the best way to manage Des Moines Water Works? Should it be your regional system? Should it remain as it is structured with the Des Moines ownership?
Sure, and so that was the question you asked us all to dive into. And beyond that, I think that our, our first duty as a council member is to the citizens of Des Moines. And we have to make sure that our, our, our policy on water is absolutely clear. Our water needs to be clean, plentiful, and affordable. And there are advantages to regional services. And I'll be, I'll be watching carefully what the proposal coming forward will be.
So you, you don't have a position right now on whether Des Moines Water Works should be regionalized?
Well, they're not suggesting Des Moines Water Works be, be regionalized. It's only the water treatment portion, the water treatment plant. And so I do have a position, it's if, if, if it's favorable to the citizens of Des Moines. If Des Moines' investment in the water treatment plant, if we're either compensated or credited for that investment. And how Des Moines would be represented on a board. That would, so right now there's trustees, what that board would be. And also that the current Des Moines Water Works staff be in charge of the water treatment plant.
Jackie?
I concur, I agree that any movement or shifting of assets in our Water Works facility, whether it's the treatment or really anything. And interestingly enough, we do have customers beyond Des Moines. We do have, I believe, twenty other entities that use our water. So certainly, I would not be in favor of shifting any assets unless we had a referendum of voters.
Okay, and referendum of voters that would Des Moines be able to veto? In other words, if all the other-
If they voted outside yes, and we said no, of yes.
Okay. Beyond that, you know, how do you feel like Des Moines Water Works, you know, where, what's your vision for the future of that? And what do you see as the major challenge that the city has to face at this point?
Well, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to regionalization. During my time on the school board, I also was on the Metropolitan Transit Authority Board, and we went through a definite shift to regionalization, thus we have DART now. And so certainly I'm not opposed to regionalization. But I do think that there needs to be further reconciliation in terms of, yes, let's look at the long-term benefit to all entities, and certainly including Des Moines. We don't want to act, and perhaps I do have a little bit of, I think about Flint, Michigan, and, you know, what occurred there. And so I think we should act, certainly as has been described, what is going to maintain the quality of our current water supply and how the overall benefit to, you know, the community would be if we shifted in that direction.
Yeah, 'cause some of those assets that you, they talk about, definitely that Des Moines developed those, right? But they need to be upgraded as well, so how do you pay for that?
Well, and then let's look back to the flood of-
Last year.
Well, last year, and then, of course, I lived through the big flood. And how it is important that we protect, you know, they, not just the area surrounding our Water Works, but I believe that there's a lot of study done, you know, how does flooding affect the water supply where it comes from? And so I believe your question was what type of resources we need to make sure are in place. And so perhaps this does call for maybe more funding from our partners, who we currently are using, are engaging as customers.
Okay, alright.
And it seemed to work for the transit, when we shifted for, to the, from the Des Moines Transit to what we have now. Regional Transit.
And Sheila, where, where do you come down on the question of whether there should be regionalization of part of the Des Moines Water Works? Should the city of Des Moines keep that asset and maintain the current relationship with its customers? Or should they get more say in how, so those customers get more say in how the Water Works is governed?
Well, I think, I think every customer has to have an equal opportunity to have a say in their water. Water is, water is necessary for life. And it's a, you know, it's critical. And clean water is something that, you know, we're really struggling with here. I think some things can be handled better at a regional level, but, you know, I, I think it's important that Des Moines maintains a certain amount of control. I think maybe a proportional representation might be fair, where Des Moines would have a majority vote because we're the majority of people. But certainly things like trying to clean the water, that has to be a regional effort. And, you know, maybe Jackie is on to something, where we ask some of our partner communities to invest with us, and we create a regional management authority for cleaning the water. And we invest in that green stormwater infrastructure upstream. And we, you know, maybe we even go so far as to work with the county supervisors to invest in things like buffer strips and grass waterways in, in fields that drain into the Des Moines and Raccoon River. So I think, you know, it's important for people to have control of their water and control of their, their Water Works facility. But I think there are some things that, you know, we definitely have to work on as a regional entity, so.
Okay, and Marlin?
I, I think that we need to hang on to it until the people come to the opinion that we need to regionalize. The devil's in the detail, we don't know what regionalized, regionalizing really means at this point in time. We don't have a, you know, paperwork or a plan until we get that plan, it's pretty hard to vote on it. I, I just don't, this is a major asset, it's huge. I, I just don't think seven people should make that decision for the city of Des Moines, who initially started this and have run all the way through. And right now, the people on the street, they don't want it to happen. They don't want regionalizations, they want to maintain control until they see a plan that actually works for them and everybody else. My solution for the, for the, for the customers, we could create an advisory board. So they could come and, you know, file their grievances and then work on that. Because I think they could be, a lot of good information come out of an advisory board from the customers. I mean, I think there's twenty-one customers right now. And as far as paying for it, you know, the user fee, that's what pays and runs the Water Works. It's what you pay for your water bill. So we have a way to pay for it, it may have to be bonded because it would be too much money upfront to do the, the major work that everybody here agrees probably needs to be done in the next ten years.
Kathy, just, so I, I believe half the water that Des Moines treats is sold to the suburbs. So, so there's part of the challenge. I think as far as the greatest threat could be the proposed Western Water Authority, which would be West Des Moines, and if they are able to pull other communities along with them. If approved by the state, that's actually pulling more water out of the raccoon than is in the raccoon. So, so that would be a threat. And then if that happens, then the Des Moines Water Treatment Plant is overbuilt. And so we just need to play better in the region. And I don't think we can, we can handle this conversation about something as critical as water in a, do we have an hour and a quarter or whatever? Obviously, there have been communities that have been struggling with this for a couple of years. So Bill Stowe started the conversation, and, you know, bless his spirit. But, so I don't think we can adequately cover that conversation here, so.
Okay, well, I, I wanna go back to Marlin and talk about property taxes. Couple of you have mentioned this, Des Moines has lower tax rates with a little option, option sales tax. People look at their tax bills and wonder, where is that money that we thought we were getting lower tax rates? And Des Moines struggles because people look at the comparison of property tax rates with the city and, and the suburbs. So are property taxes uncompetitive? What could be done to give people property tax relief while still paying for city priorities?
I'd like to see property tax relief for seniors, you know, that's one, one solution, affordable housing for senior citizens. But we do have tax increment financing, and it was supposed to build buildings, increasing the tax base thereby lowering our property taxes. And it really hasn't done anything. We've had it for forty years, it's built a lot of big buildings, and the payback is pretty much zero, because when those buildings come on the tax rolls, they pay the exact same tax rate as everybody else. So really, there isn't a huge payback unless you take a bare piece of land, raw land, and then build. So I think that one of the solutions is we've really gotta relook, we gotta modernize tax increment financing. That's the number one goal. We have to look at what we incentivize, we just can't incentivize anything because we, they wanna build on property. We have to incentivize things that don't use a massive amount of city services and actually increase our taxes. Because right now, this incentivization has been for lots of people in a building, high concentration, lots of cars on the road with people who live outside the city and don't pay property tax to help fund that economic incentive we gave to the building. So, you know, it, it has, it's a multifactorial problem, we also have to look at burden shifting. The sales tax was a burden shift, thirty percent of that comes from outside the city. We have to find ways to have these people that come in from outside the city pay their fair share of what we provide. Ambulance, police, fire, roads, and infrastructure. So, you know, there's multiple, this has to be attacked in multiple ways. But the first way is just to reduce spending on this economic development, shift some of that money over so we can start getting more work done on our infrastructure. We make the city look good with good infrastructure, companies are gonna wanna come here, people will want to come here. Right now, our infrastructure's crap, our taxes are high, schools aren't that good, and our houses are fifty thousand dollars less valuable than houses in the surrounding communities.
What about tax-exempt nonprofits?
I know, that's a pretty good one.
Let's you guys react.
Fifty percent or more, and you'll see people say, it's what, fifty, sixty percent? I think it's probably sixty percent.
But what about tax-exempt nonprofits? Do you ask them to pay more for services?
I think that, well, when you look at hospitals, people say they're nonprofit, and I disagree with hospitals being nonprofit. It doesn't make sense, but yeah, we have to start looking at something. And I think the first thing to look at is employees in the building that don't actually live here and pay property tax. I mean, renters pay property tax, don't get me wrong, that's only about homeowners and property owners. But I think we need to look at, at the people that come in from out of the city, use the services, and the wheels on the ground from people that don't live here and pay the property taxes through rent or otherwise. So we have to do a burden shifting. We need to start looking at real serious things that happen in other cities. But the problem is, we can't be that city that always gets it right, but only after we try everything else first. That's the franchise fee. So this is a lot of hard work, and it takes a lot of brain power on this. It isn't gonna be a small thing, that's why I say this is a full-time job.
Okay.
Well, that's a lot to unpack. So I think there are only five organizations that are voluntarily paying, it's called PILOT, payments in lieu of fiscal, and, and taxes.
Of taxes, yeah.
Mercy, the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, Des Moines Water Works, and they're paying the big burden of it. Metro Waste, Unity Point are the only ones that are paying. So how you get other people to, to pay, I mean, that's, that's really difficult to get.
I mean, who, what's the, which is the biggest problem, is it state government?
Well, yeah, I mean, they had a rollback of commercial taxes that really hit. Jackie is nodding her head yes, I think it's six million, so, so that was, that's a big hit, so, so.
What about defibrillating the tax base though?
So, but, so, so what I don't understand is, and I can't get my head around this, is how with, if we're going to reduce the property taxes, and yet we're gonna spend more on the roads, I mean, it's sort of like, I'm going on a diet, but I'm still gonna eat Big Macs and I'm gonna have malts. I mean, you can't, you can't do both. I mean, it's, it's almost like pandering to people, I don't think you can do both. So, you know, I know the property, our, Des Moines property taxes are high. And I think the only community that's close is Windsor Heights.
Right.
And I know that the residents want to fix the roads and ensure that we have the absolute best police force and, and fire. And we want to ensure that we tackle the neighborhood blight. I think our challenge as, as council members is to get more people to live in Des Moines. And, you know, that's, that's, you don't get more people to live in Des Moines by saying that our schools aren't very good. And, and there are some great stories to be told about successes in neighborhood- successes in neighborhood schools like Findlay. And there are some great stories in Oak Park. But a discussion for another day. But to say that our schools aren't doing well and that our students are not performing well is, is really perpetuating a story that's just not true, so.
Yes, it is a discussion for today. Because we, and I spoke to a group last week where we're drawing these young folks here who are coming to work at the nationwide and the principals and perhaps living downtown for a little while. In fact, we have a colleague of ours who's running for council who was in that situation and now has a family, but intentionally decided to stay in Des Moines because of the schools, because our schools offer a more diverse experience for their students. And, I mean, I think all of us, some of us could share stories of our own children who've gone on to, my daughter lives in Chicago, and because of her experience here in a diverse school system is able to be competitive in an environment like that. But I think the issue, pretty much what you're alluding to, is we've got to get them here. And so we have to have affordable housing so people can have their starter homes. And then as they enjoy the amenities in Des Moines, of which we, I believe all can tell that we have many amenities in this community. And even for diverse populations with the cultural attractions that we have here, we have the Fort Des Moines Museum. That is an icon in terms of history of military and women, African-American soldiers who came here. There is not one like that in the country.
But you don't think that people who have a choice where to live don't look at the tax rates and go, well, maybe I should just live in West Des Moines or Waukees instead of Des Moines. I'm working downtown, but.
I believe they weigh, I believe they weigh what we're discussing. They're weighing the, I'm closer to work. I have a park that is, you know, accessible to me. I have, I can go to the Civic Center in two minutes, the airport in two minutes as opposed to taking an Uber that's going to cost me.
So, so part of your, your total budget is transportation. And so.
Right.
And, and just as, as long as we're talking about the schools, it's just an absolute shame that the city council and the school board don't regularly meet together.
I don't know where that came from.
And so, so when I was on the council previously as an interim role, I said, well, what the heck's the deal? Why do you never even meet together? Because the, the, the city and the school should be supporting each other. And they're just not doing that. And so we could use some great PR about some of the, the many success stories that are in our schools, so.
I'm going to go to Sheila for her last word on this issue. And then Andy, did you have a question? Were you going to jump in?
No, I just wondered, you were asking the question about, I mean, would you be willing to impose a pilot on churches or services organizations, you know?
Well, they say that, you know, they provide social services in Des Moines. But so, you know, when you, you look at the large campus for Drake and for DMU and for Grandview, just those alone, you know, that's, well, I'll, I'll be happy to give you the numbers here.
Yeah, they're willing to push for user fees or pilots or, I mean, that's a question.
Well, I mean, I've even talked to churches about, well, how do we start? And do we have to do that every year? So, you know, pay something. Do we need to pay something? So it's a challenge. But you know, I guess if it was easy, we'd already be doing them. So maybe we just had, need to revisit the topic, so.
So Sheila, I just want to get you on the record here on, on property taxes. Are, are Des Moines' property taxes too high? Is it a problem? Or as we're hearing, the city has things it needs to invest in, maintaining the property tax level is going to, is part of how you pay for that?
Well, I rent. And rents are high. And most people on limited incomes are renters. And so, you know, they get affected by the property tax because their landlord has to pay it. I don't know whether they are high or not. The city needs revenue. I mean, that's just a truth we can't get away from if we're going to provide services. And that's one of the reasons why I really was in support of the one set sales tax, because it's not affecting only property owners. It is affecting everybody. And including, you know, our guests who come to use services in Des Moines or workers who come in to use services. When I was, I'm a founder of the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, otherwise known as Silt, and I was the director for a short while. And in counties where we would have land, even though we were a nonprofit, we committed to paying the property tax because we felt it was important for that county to not be denied those taxes that they had been receiving previously. And, you know, we felt it was sort of a good faith effort to continue to support that, that area. So I, I would like to look at some kind of potential user fee for, for nonprofit organizations. And, you know, as Carl said, the devil's in the details. It would be probably a long drawn out conversation to figure out where that would fall. But I think we have to look at creative ways for the city to, to create, to generate revenue. And I really like Marlin's idea about limiting or, you know, putting a hold on property tax increases for seniors. They're on, especially where they're on limited incomes. They don't, it's not, doesn't help anyone to have, for them to have to move out of their homes that they've been in forever, right? We want people to age in place as much as possible. It's good for the neighborhood. It's good for everybody. And, you know, if the property taxes are becoming a burden for a senior, then there, we need to be able to provide some kind of relief. I don't want people to have to move out of their homes just because they, they're old and they can't afford the taxes. So we definitely need to figure out different, different revenue generating avenues. But, you know, again, we've got 40% of our property is non-tax. And it's tough. If you, you know, we have a lot of amenities. And living in Des Moines comes with a lot of benefits. So, you know, I think a way we can address that is we need to create more dense, compact housing that is entry level and can, you know, if we have more townhouses that people can buy and pay taxes on, you've got more people paying taxes than if you had one big house. So, and from a carbon footprint perspective, we also need to create density and compact living. So I think that might be one way to, to try to work with that. But I'm open for anything else, really.
Let's move on to policing. City of Des Moines has dealt with complaints about racial profiling in particular, including lawsuits. There has been a number of proposals advanced, including people asking for a ban on racial profiling, an end to pretextural traffic stops, which is the kind where you say, oh, your brake light was out, but where are your guns and where's your pot, right? And then the, the other concern is, well, let's, let's start with those. So racial profiling. How do you, how does, how would you say that the police should improve its relationships with all communities within the city of Des Moines?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And to me, racial profiling comes under social equity. We know that people of color get targeted. They get arrested more often. They get harsher sentences. And this issue in particular is very important to me because I have mixed-race children. My children's father's from Nigeria. And, you know, one of my greatest fears is that I might get a call some night that my 16-year-old son has been arrested or heaven forbid, he's been shot, you know? And that terrifies me. And so I think as a policy, we have to ban racial profiling. It, it can't be allowed in this day and age. Everyone in our community deserves the right to walk around freely with dignity and not worry about looking over their shoulder and being harassed. And I also agree, we need to eliminate the pretextual stops. Working as an attorney, I worked with the public defender's office for a while. And, you know, I had several cases where, yeah, they had a light out or some other small thing and then it just spiraled into, you know, they're being arrested because they had a small baggie with them or something. That ruins people's lives. And I think we need to, I, I like the idea, idea of having a citizens review committee for when things happen. I think when our officers know what the parameters are, it not only makes, you know, the people in the streets safer, it makes our officers safer. They know what the expectations are. There has to be accountability. I think they need training in terms of implicit bias so that they can understand their own potential bias underlying bias, as well as de-escalation training. I think that is critical. And I, again, I think that protects them as well as the public. And they need to know there's going to be accountability. And, you know, if, if their superiors are not going to hold the officers accountable, then the superiors also need to be held accountable. So I think there's a lot of really good things that we can do in this area. Because again, I, you know, I want everyone in our community to feel they can walk about freely and not be harassed.
Okay. And, and Marlin, same question to you.
She stole my thunder. I was a former public defender employee too. And I did that work from civil misdemeanors to felony murder, defending cases. And I think she's just totally on point. Now to add to that, talking about a citizens review board, we have boards and commissions that guide the city council on practically every matter. They're important because the council rep can't be everywhere. And so, you know, a board like this, but the makeup has to be a good cross-section of the community. And you have to have law enforcement at the table. If you don't, you really don't have a board. You have a kangaroo court. Let's get everybody involved. And I think putting police in the schools is an important thing. It's a training school. You know, I've had training on this multiple times, implicit bias in making judicial decisions. And that instinctual bias that you have because of some reaction you've had in your life. And, you know, those kinds of training programs are okay. But the best training, I think, is to get these law enforcement officers, the new ones in the schools, let them mix with people and see how people of color, that they're just normal people. There's nothing else extra. But also the extra rules and pretextual stops, we need to work hard on that. So, you know, we're, we're in parallel on this. I just think the devil's in the detail on a review board. You have to make it something that is reflective of the community and involves law enforcement.
What about data collection? Do you feel like the city of Des Moines at this point knows which, you know, whether people of color get pulled over more often? Or is that more of an anecdotal thing at this point? Because data is not being collected.
Yeah, I, if it isn't collected, we should, you can get the data. I mean, it would be there if you did the right algorithm and ran the right search criteria. You could find, I think data's always good. I'm all for data collection.
You might get it if there's an arrest, but maybe not.
Can I just add too, that I, I would agree, data is really important. You can't manage what you don't measure. And if we don't know who is getting pulled over, then, you know, we can't act appropriately.
Carl?
Yes. So I am vehemently opposed to racial profiling. And the Civil and Human Rights Commission is working on a policy, working with the police. And I think we need to give that process a chance to work. I think probably by early next year, they, they expect to have their work done. And that's, that's why we have that staff. I, I think the worst thing that we can do is to lead on this through putting out something like a bumper sticker campaign. Let's go through the process. You know, I think there's some work that could be done with the Des Moines Civil Rights, the commission that chooses police and fire officers, review, civil service, not rights, yes. And so that's a, a long process. You know, some of the things that could be done better to have more people of color represented on the police and fire department. Maybe it's a longer list, perhaps not relied on so, so heavily on the oral part of that. I know it's very carefully need to choose new police officers and that have a, a chance to make this a career and, you know, have the right tools to succeed.
Some of the community.
Sheila, I think, I think this, all of the city staff is already going through implicit.
Bias training.
Bias training, I think, and de-escalation. So I believe that is already started, or that's what I was told. So, so I don't think that.
Part of the concern, though, is the community groups had been asking for the, for the ban on racial profiling, the ban on those traffic stops. Didn't feel that confident in the process that you were talking about and worried that the early drafts that they were seeing were really broad and kind of toothless.
That was not, not too great. Many chances to, to improve that. So, you know, one, I just, Sheila, to your point about people of color being able to walk freely in the community, whether that's to a theater or drive through a park, that should, just should not be allowed. And I'm, I'm disturbed by how people use incorrect pronouns when they refer to they and them, and it's really us. We're, we're all the community. And so I think we could all do better in that. And monitor our pronouns just a little bit better.
All right. I want you to get in here on this, Jackie. Where do you stand on this racial profiling discussion that's been going on? And what do you do to improve relations between the police and communities of color in Des Moines?
I support a ban. I believe the city council is accountable for oversight of, I do think we should have a review commission. I believe the city council is accountable to making sure that that is effective. And every single family member, including my two brothers, have been stopped by police.
In Des Moines?
In, in Des Moines.
Okay.
And my husband is an officer of the court and has been stopped. So when I look, and by the way, there is a system now in place called tracks, which I believe are in our patrol cars, that are currently being used for collection. Now, I'm not sure if we are asking the right questions about, you know, what is being, what are they, what data they're collecting. But there is a system in place that could be used, according to information I have. Going back to our personal experiences, I think that, I do want to applaud efforts that have been made. The Community Ambassador Program was started by a dear friend of mine, the late Reverend Earl Lewis, where he brought together members of, initially was African-American community. They usually were faith. It was ministers and individuals from churches. And then now it's expanded to the Asian community and to the Latino community, to support efforts to have this kind of community policing model where you have people that they, you know, are identified by their outfits that they wear. And they go to events, to the state fair, I think was born out of some incidents that occurred at the Iowa State Fair. They go to the fair and they're visible. And generally, when individuals see people that they know, particularly if they're their ministers or there's somebody from their church, they will be responsible. And they, and even though they are not official police law enforcement, they have gone through training and are able to represent. And I applaud that program. And I think that we probably need more individuals like that. When I was on the school board, I voted to support school resource officers. And I do think that it is important. Both my children had a, they knew who their school resource officers were. And they knew if, you know, any, they had an amiable relationship with their school resource officers. So I agree. I think that's a valuable way to improve at an earlier age, you know, the perception. perception. And then, of course, when you go to neighborhood groups, and I went to the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association meeting the other day, and they were talking about having events where the, their community police officer would participate in some of their picnics and function activities. So neighborhood associations, I think, are a valuable way to incorporate. I myself do implicit bias training, and it's more healthcare-related, but I think that what the community organizations that you're referring to are concerned about is that kind of checking off saying, "Yes, we had our training." My training is what we call cultural humility training, where we emphasize that it's a lifelong learning process to understand people from the point in which they came to where they are in their particular station in life. And it's not something that ends in a day, but it's something that, you know, you're maybe partnered with organizations or maybe faith groups that you haven't been exposed to, and it's more of an interaction rather than a classroom sitting and absorbing a lecture.
To Jackie's point, there is a system called tracks, and the police officers have to guess the ethnicity group that they associate with. So, so it's, so the, the state driver's license currently does not, even when a police officer scans the driver's license, is not able to find out what group the individual has self-identified, right? Is that correctly?
Although it might be, it might be informative to know what group the police officer thinks they're...
Right.
Well, so they try to make a guess, but, but again, it's a guess, so.
All right. Well, before, okay, go ahead.
Just real quick. This idea was floated the other day, and I think it's something worth considering, too, is I think we might need to require our officers to live within the community so that they're surrounded by, you know, the people that they're supposed to protect.
Good luck without me. I thought about that with the school district.
Yeah.
Which I actually feel more passionate that if teachers don't feel comfortable sending their children to...
Their own school? Yeah, that's a problem, right?
You can't force them. You can only force the managers.
Right.
Couldn't you make it part of their employment contract?
You give them an incentive.
I've got a couple of really, I've got a couple of really quick questions. I want yes or no answers, if possible, and then I'm going to let you all wrap up. Okay, so starting with Jackie, should taxpayers help build a new soccer stadium in Des Moines? Yes or no?
Not without their input. I mean, again, I believe we should have a referendum.
Okay, referendum with a vote, okay. Soccer stadium, taxpayer help?
I'm generally against taxpayer help for things like stadiums.
Okay, Marlin?
No.
No?
No.
No. Okay, starting with Sheila, should Des Moines allow electric scooter rentals downtown? Yes or no?
I know this has been talked about a lot recently, and, you know, I guess they need to, I, I think yes. I think we need to encourage all forms of transportation, but I think we need to look carefully at what kind of parameters we put around those so that public safety isn't lessened.
All right. Less with public safety.
No, until we figure out what the liability's going to be. There's a lot of liability. They're supposed to be on the streets, and our streets aren't safe enough for those little wheels.
Electric scooters?
No, under the current format of what the vendors are offering, so.
Okay.
I'd say no unless we have more.
You say no. And starting with Marlin, more traffic cameras, less traffic cameras, keep it the same?
I think we keep it the same. The reason we have traffic cameras is to improve safety. We shouldn't do it just for money. We need to put them in the right areas to make sure it slows traffic and lessens accidents.
Carl?
I'm for obeying the law, so I guess that's, yes, if you don't want a ticket, don't speak.
Okay, so keep it the same?
Or, or go through...
Keep it the same or add more?
I'm inclined to do more if, if there are places that, that are, there's a lot of violators.
Okay.
Keep it the same.
Keep it the same? Sheila?
I, I would want to try to understand whether what we have now is enough, because I, I think I tend to agree with Carl. It's about public safety, and it's not, I agree, it's totally not about revenue generation. So if we need more, I would want more, but if not, I say keep it the same.
And a question that parents everywhere want to know the answer to, keep beggars' night where it is, move it to Halloween, or put it on a weekend?
Oh, jeez. You know, I grew up having Halloween on Halloween evening, and so it was a weird thing for me to come here, and I didn't even know what beggars' night was. I don't know. I think community, I think there's something very charming about a community tradition, you know? So I think maybe I would go with keep it where it is.
Keep it where it is, Marlin?
Keep it where it is, yeah.
Girl?
Yes, as long as we keep the jokes as part of it.
Okay, keep it where it is, but keep the jokes, Jackie?
Okay, I'm opposed to giving candy to children, as you know, from parades. I don't do it, I don't do it.
You don't do it?
But it is a tradition. I believe in traditions, and so I keep it where it is.
Okay, you can give toothbrushes.
Right. Well, my neighbor gave half, half dol fifty cents pieces.
Oh, that's expensive.
He was the most popular husband.
Okay, so, let's see here. So I think that Marlin went last on the opening statement, so why don't you go first on the closing statements? Just take a minute.
One minute, okay.
If you can.
Des Moines has some serious problems. They need somebody that wants to work those problems. I understand neighborhood groups. I've done it for 20 years. I've appeared in front of the city council, Plan and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, all on behalf of neighborhoods, and not as a lawyer, not as, as a member of board members. I've chaired neighborhood organizations. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I know the parties because I've worked with them in many, in many times in the past. I can do this job, and I can do it very well for the city. I can do it very well for the residents. The residents don't want big business or special interest to rule out over their best interest. They want representation for the people, and I'm all for the neighborhoods. When the neighborhoods want something, I will fight for them. I'll fight for them harder than anybody else. That's it.
Thank you. Carl?
I am a one-time interim city council member. I got a chance to work at City Hall and peek behind the curtains. It didn't frighten me away. I'm ready to, to go back to the table. I have many successes and projects that I've started and completed in Des Moines. I have the patience, the persistence, and the passion to do this job well. I'm recently fully retired. I will make this a full-time job. I live five blocks away from City Hall. I don't even need a parking place. I will be there frequently. I know the players. And my two favorite four-letter words are "vote boss."
Okay. Jackie?
Well, I chose bridging gaps as my campaign theme because I bring, as a result of my lifelong experience here in Des Moines, experienced bridging and building coalitions, which I think led to my being elected chair of almost every government body I've served on, from the school board to the Metropolitan Transit Authority. I was the initial chair of the Iowa Work Force Investment Board, who currently I serve chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe that it's critical for Des Moines to move forward, to have our residents and families feeling welcome by opportunities that we provide here. And I think that some of the issues that I've tackled, which have been difficult, but we have been able to work together, and I think I would be the person who could bring that experience to the council.
Okay, now I'm going to get your name right this time. Sheila Kanoplo Odeley, right?
Very good, very good. Thank you, Kathy. So like I said at the beginning, we have a very narrow window of time to take climate action, and to me, that is the most important thing that needs to be done. And just as we saw last year with the flash flooding, the impacts of climate change are local, but so are a lot of the solutions. And I'm the only candidate talking about climate right now. The Des Moines of the future is not going to be the Des Moines of the present. We potentially will see things like transportation disruption, supply chain disruption, crop failures, potentially food shortages. And we have to, we have to be honest about those climate impacts that we might be facing, and we have to start thinking about that and planning for those things. How are we going to raise 40% of the food that the city's going to need to eat? You know, how are we going to transition from a fossil fuel to a, an electric green New Deal economy here in the City of Des Moines? Because there are a lot of things that we absolutely can do and we must be doing them. And I have the knowledge and the skills about what other, what is working well in other cities and what is being implemented, and I think I would bring a strong leadership in that area to the council. And quite honestly, I think we have a lot of great candidates running, but I am distinguished in that I have some ideas on what we need to do to, to make sure that Des Moines of the future continues to be stable and vibrant and resilient.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to all the candidates, and thanks to everybody for watching today. There are three other candidates in this at-large race for the city council seat. They were here yesterday. You can see on desmoineregistered.com the video of that meeting, and for all the best coverage of state and local government, politics, and Iowa caucuses. Thank you.